Any of these you want to stop? You want to stop with the technology ones, pause?
Sure, that'd be nice. I can get rolling.
So V A G, electronic communication policy, and I J N, technology acceptable use policy. Are those the only two?
Yes. Yes. They in this staple piece?
No, but this is a further back because it was before then. Yeah, there you go.
Now, I think these were policies that the school committee wanted, correct?
Correct. That was requested at our last meeting.
Okay. Do you know why?
I think some of it had to do with the pictures that were on the website and
That was one thing.
That was part of it. You know, they need to give permission every year, is in the policy, but...
That was one thing, yeah. As I recollect, it had to do with the... When you described how this originally came forward, it had to do with school committee, I think. School committee practices. And that does seem to be what the policy needs. So that may be what that...
Photos.
Yep. And that, the question on that was that there was language that said in the last page, 404, written parental guardian permission is required posting, prior to posting student work. And then it says, "Use of student photos, name blah 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 is prohibited without explicit written permission from the parent guardian and student for each occurrence." And we really were questioning if that's the practice because we're seeing tons of student photos and thinking...
So what? And again, I probably would want to ask Russ this, but annually, as part of the handbook, parents have to sign off on that either allow or disallow whether kids are going to be used. So we have that in place on an annual basis?
Right. But this doesn't say that. This says, "For each occurrence." So the question is, is the policy out of date, incorrect? Or clearly, we're not following that, so...
So I think the assumption has been that... And again, from what I understand, when teachers, in theory, go to post, they're checking with the school secretary to make sure that that parent signed off as a yes versus a no before they post. So if I'm going to post my kid, you know, like the picture of my classroom with, you know, five kids holding up their projects, then in theory... And again, I think in practice, it's happening most of the time. That teacher is checking in with the school secretary and saying, "Are these five kids okay?"
I know where I used to work. We used to get a list at the beginning of the year of everybody who had signed off. And so we were aware for the year if there were any individuals in the classroom who said no.
And I think they're doing... I don't think they're doing it that way. I think they're doing it more as a... And again, I know just from practice of rolling the way they were doing... And again, that may have changed.
Just checking in.
They were checking in with Judy to say, you know, "Can I put this kid's picture up?"
Okay. But that's not the...
I know what...
And I'm okay with that, to be honest with you.
Well, and again, that's where I would ask Russ, is the wording of that?
Oh, no. This is very clear. Explicit written permission for each occurrence. That's very clear.
But if you're giving permission for the year...
That's not for each occurrence.
Well, see, like in a court, I would argue that that's, that you're giving permission for this year. So every occurrence this year, I am giving permission to.
That's not the intent of this. And that's not what that says.
And again, like, I mean, feel free to... We can change it. I'm just saying, like, if I were, you know... Again, that's my understanding of the way they've always taken that, that language.
I would think that should be changed to say something like the parent will be asked to give permission at the beginning of the year. That permission will give us permission to all the year to use the student's image.
Unless the parent changes otherwise during the year.
Yeah.
Yeah, that they could revoke that permission during the year.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I would agree with you. If you tried to implement it this way, the impact of that would be no student photos would appear because it's too cumbersome to reach out every time you want to post a group of five kids whose artwork is... But that is, this is a requirement for, in my industry, that it's every single occurrence. And it's tough. So I think we should modify it to
In the...
Match current practice.
So that one's in the acceptable use policy?
Yes.
Yep. There was some... Is it practice? Where did I just read this? That information is limited to the student's first name and district. Is that right? Where did I just read that?
It says to, it just says to limit.
Oh, here it is. Limit identifying. Is that, is that the practice?
Practice is usually first name or initials.
Or initials, okay.
So we should probably make sure that we're... It typically has been first name, I think. But it's usually like first, a lot of times it's first name and grade. If it's like general...
So it might be student first name, initials, grade and/or school district, so that they're all options. Does that work?
Say that again.
So on B, the last line on B, 20B, limit identifying information to student first name, initials, grade, and/or school district. So they have the choice of those things? Because it sounds like they're using those things currently. Okay.
Again, I think I've seen both. I've seen like J L in this is so-and-so's classroom or... Usually it's first name. Where I would say 90% of the time, we're not identifying the students, but...
I know. That's what I was going to say. There's no identification of the law.
But when there is, it's usually first name.
Okay. So is Lori, I mean, Christie, are you capturing these changes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. And so the other one about for each occurrence, did you get language for that? The first line in B?
How are we going to have that read? I mean, I think it should maybe read something like the first part is good, the use of student photos, graphic likeness, name or identification is prohibited without explicit written permission from the parent guardian, period. Or... And then the rest of that thing. And then the rest of that. And student, guardian and student, period. And then the rest of it gets taken out. And then we just can write another sentence that says something to the effect of, "Parents will be asked at the beginning of each school year to give written permission."
So you could just change A to, like, annual. So written permission, written parental guardian permission is required annually prior to...
Oh, yeah, you could do that.
Yeah, that's simple.
Yeah. And just take for each occurrence out of the second part of B.
Yeah.
Yeah, makes it easier.
Do you want to keep student in there? Permission from the parent guardian and student? Or just parent guardian?
Yeah, that's interesting. Well, some students are 18, right? So...
We can put parent, guardian... Or student if 18.
I'm assuming if someone's taking a picture, I'm 15. They're taking my picture. I really don't want them to use that picture. And I say that? Do you know what I mean? You could see circumstances where students wouldn't want the pictures used.
Well, I mean, it is common sense, too. If the parents say, "Yeah, it's okay." And then you take a picture of a kid on a bad day and the student says, "I don't want you to use that," nobody's going to use it. I mean, we wouldn't do that. So having permission to use it and using it, just because you got permission to use it doesn't mean you got to do it, you know?
Right.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
That, that good?
That's good.
All right.
Yep. That's that one.
The other one was really, I think, more about we had not looked at this policy in a while and we wanted to take a look in terms, the electronic communication policy in terms of the rationale at the time this was developed. I think we were in a place where the superintendent was inordinately concerned with people responding inappropriately, responding when they shouldn't. So I think this came up in another conversation around, is this really, you know, is it too restrictive? Is it reasonable? So we just wanted to take a general look at it, I think.
And again, I don't know the full history. From what I remember, it was, this was kind of like a blanket M A S E policy. Like, we didn't have one prior. Or it was like a one-liner. Basically saying, you know, that electronic communication would, you know, constitute a meeting and therefore, in order to not violate... It was a short little, instead of a three-pager like this. But I think it was one of those when we were starting to make that transition from paper-based to electronic to that, that they kind of added this one.
Well, I think there was, so there's two issues here. It's the one about just the communication, you know, between people in the district. And then there was the other issue that came up at the school committee recently, which is probably why I was really looking at this, is who communicates? Who communicates information?
And that's, I think, if you look at, on page two, email communication sent to a committee member by a member of the public. This came up during the process that's described here is that if, for example, I receive something, an email, or I see something on Facebook, that I'm supposed to simply say, "Thank you for bringing this to my attention" and forward it to the chairperson of the school committee. And in general, that's not a bad process. But in reality, at the speed of communications and certainly during the regionalization conversation, there really was a need and a desirability for us to be able to respond quickly. This sort of delays that process, but it's definitely safer, I guess, in that you don't have rogue school committee members responding willy-nilly with their own opinions that may not reflect that of the school committee.
Well, you know, why would you have? I think there's an assumption. And I think it's probably different in the way it was set up because it was two towns, right? So if you had something from Boylston, there's really only three members that would really, really have concern about that, it seems, like the way it was. Not as a region. I would think that it's the, that the chair that would respond. I mean, I've always known it. The committees I've been around, that it's always the chair of the committee. Or else why, why do you have the committee? I mean, how does, you could just respond, right? And not without a discussion. So, I mean, if the, it goes to the chair. The chair wouldn't just respond either. I think the idea behind is it goes to the committee first, to the discussion, and then the chair responds whatever is the will of the committee. So it doesn't mean if the chair gets the information, the chair can just respond either.
Oh, yeah, right, right, yeah.
But then you're describing a process that... And it depends on the timeliness and urgency of whatever the nature of the communication is. If it's an email and somebody's raising an issue, then yeah, that really, it would go to Christie and to the chair. And maybe you bring it and put it on the agenda. Or the chair responds based on policy or whatever. I think where the question has come up is, are we going to be responsive in a social media context? Because social media, the messaging is happening and sometimes if you don't respond, a lot of errant information is just proliferated. Now, some people have the viewpoint that that's not my concern or... But again, I look back on the, on the regionalization thing and it really was important that we be out there, that we know what people are asking and could respond to questions.
I would think that's a different committee, though, because that was a committee formed, that was a regionalization committee that was headed by the school committee. So anything that, anything that, any question really was a question that the schools could respond to or the committee could respond to, right? Or a school committee member. But under normal circumstances, that wouldn't be it. I mean, you'd be responsible for responding to something that had to do with policy or budget. Anything else, really, is referred to the schools. So you wouldn't have to. So you think about what kind of policy issue wouldn't, couldn't wait a maximum of four weeks to get to, right?
To get on an agenda.
To get on an agenda, I mean. Is it something? And if it was something that, there was a policy that there was something so bad in it that it's affected students, you could just contact the schools and we could stop it until the policy was changed. We get stuff like that all the time with parents saying, you know, "This isn't right. This should be changed." And so we think about it and it'll be like, okay, let's just hold, let's just, let's just put a, you know, moratorium until the school committee can look at this.
So how does that relate to the example that Lori's giving of the regionalization committee? Or there could be some other subcommittee of some sort of the school committee that's working on something behalf of the school committee? And they're needing to interact with the public around that initiative?
Well, those are different. That's, that's those, but they don't, they don't come off, they don't come up often, but that's a different committee. She's absolutely right. And that committee, where things would change quickly at certain times of the process. There would be a need to us to get information out so that there isn't a lot of misinformation.
So let me use another example from a different district. Russ is, or was, a school committee member in his town. And because I follow him on Facebook, I see his posts. And there was a really serious issue that was circulating in the community around the superintendent. And there was a lot of misinformation. As a school committee member, he posted information about that situation to say, "There's a lot of information out here. Here are some facts that people need to know." And he laid out some facts.
Was he a chair, you said, or not?
He was not chair. He was a member. Now, he may have cleared that.
What was the process? Because the other thing is, if you don't want to wait, if it's something like that, and if somebody's saying something about someone in the superintendent and you want to clear it up, it's only 48 hours you need to schedule a meeting. So it's really only two days and you could, you could even schedule a meeting to meet if it's that serious. So I don't know what he did. I mean, I'd like to ask him that question.
Yeah, that's why it might be good to sort of talk that through with him around where, how he sees the considerations. And maybe, maybe he ran what he was going to post by the school committee or by the chair.
It's 48 hours, right, to post? Yeah, so you would need, if there was something like that, I would think, what you said. We really can't wait. It happens right after the school committee meeting and it's another month before you meet. And you think...
Anything unforeseen. Anything unforeseen.
And what's the, there's no...
I think my point is in a... I don't disagree. I mean, policy-wise, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I think from a practical point of view, if you're on social media, social media is instantaneous. It's not, you can't even wait a day to respond to something if you're going to respond.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of people take the approach, "We're just not going to respond." And we'll respond in other ways. But I, I've brought to Bob issues before. A few years ago, there were tremendous issues with the buses. And it was helpful to know, here's what people are saying. And then in the middle of it, somebody interjected, "You know, you really should contact Bob at the school department because he's really helpful around this." And it was just, it changed the whole trajectory of the conversation because people were basically complaining and whining and saying how frustrated they were. And then some sort of rational voice was interjected that said, "Have you talked to them yet? Because they can actually make this a lot better."
So you say, because that's a different response. I mean, I get stuff, like emails, and somebody sends something to Angela and then Angela forwards it to me and replies, "Oh, please speak to Mr. Zangy about this." That's a, that's a, that's a response, right?
And that's a referral. That's covered here.
So that's a response without talking to anybody but...
But it says, you can, it says here, "The chairperson, in his or her discretion, should take one or more of the following actions. The second one is refer the issue to the superintendent for a response." So I guess I'm thinking...
See, that's what I, that one I would question.
I'm feeling like the chair, you would question it. That's just the example that you gave, isn't it?
Well, but I would think anybody on the committee who got something like that would know to say, and said, if you're not the chair of the committee, but you get something you think is a school issue...
Right. But I think that the intent here is for it to go through the chair so that the chair knows what the issues are that are going on out there. So if I just referred somebody to you and everybody in the committee was doing that, the chair would be out of the loop potentially.
Well, I don't think I've ever gotten one that everybody wasn't C C'd on, or at least on that committee at the time, just that town. So maybe it has to be work to say that, you know, there's...
So part one of that does say that forward to the committee chair or the superintendent of schools is appropriate. So above that one, two.
They're also...
So you could bypass the committee chairperson, again, in that situation.
And is it...
With a non-substantive message, you know?
The last item, too, says, "Electronic communications must be sent to the Berlin-Boylston keeper of the records." No, that's you.
Yeah, you should be C C'd.
You are the communication keeper of the records.
Okay. He is the records official for public records.
I am.
Yes, yes. But I'm the keeper of the records for school committee communication.
Correct. So if we do communicate with somebody, we need to C C you on it. If somebody from the public sends something to us, we need to forward that to you.
Okay.
And if I'm not mistaken, the conversation about, the conversation that took place at the school committee meeting back in the fall, I don't know if I'm remembering this correctly, wasn't really about this, it wasn't really about, you know, if we get something, can we just forward it to the superintendent? If it's a school issue? Or if there's something on social media, can we just say, you know, "Talk to Jeff or talk to Bob about that"? I think it was about, I think the issue was more internal that, like, who on the school committee gets to speak for the school committee? I think it was more like that. And I forget what the issue was.
Yeah, I do remember something coming up that... And here's my dilemma with this. From a policy point of view, I do think you need some boundaries to avoid people either promoting their own agendas under the guise of the school committee or somebody going rogue. So I do think policy and constraints are needed. The communicator in me struggles with that in today's day and age where so much is happening out there on social media. And in a sense, we're making the decision that we're not going to be part of that conversation. And maybe that's what we have to do to protect everybody? I don't know, but...
I mean, if an issue was happening like that on social media, could the authority be given to the committee, the school committee chair, to be the one who's interacting and responding so that we don't have individuals on the committee just going off or, and/or? If a, if a subcommittee is formed? One of my notes on this policy was, I didn't see reference to subcommittees, which I think is a different authority group. So if there's a subcommittee, it seems that the authority should be given to them to go ahead and respond to things that come up because they're the most immersed in it and most knowledgeable about it. But in the case when there's not a subcommittee and just their issues sort of start to fly online, buses or whatever, that the issue be brought to the school committee's chair's attention and that person takes the lead on responding so that you don't have, because potentially you could have several school committee members bouncing in and out of those conversations.
And that becomes problematic around quorum meeting. If there's too many school committee members weighing in on a particular issue, that's very problematic. All right.
I think it was, I think it had to do with me, too. Remember that?
It had to do with you?
Yeah. Don't you remember?
No. You'll have to remind me.
I was, it was an issue of who I would communicate with. Because I, it was my impression when I started and when I met with Cliff, that I would talk to Cliff and Cliff would disseminate. Any committee I've worked, it's always worked like that. The chair, and then the chair disseminates because there were issues that came up and I said, "Well, I've already talked about this." And you? "No, no, you didn't." Wow. That was my intention. That's what I thought, that that's how it worked. But here in Berlin-Boylston, apparently, that wasn't the way it worked. It was more of a free, a freestyle. I wasn't, so that's part of how the whole communication thing...
I think that was a different issue, though. And I think that issue was more about what the expectations were of the school committee if something was going on. But again, that, that piece is around clarity as long as the chair is clear that they have a role to disseminate that information to the members. We were used to a model where the school committee, I mean, where the superintendent communicated directly to the members in a, either by phone calls or in an email to provide information.
Yeah, like on, before school committee meeting. Well, I started to send them...
I saw that. That was good.
Because Angela came and gave me some. She gave me some outlines of stuff that other school committee members had done.
Oh, okay. So the dissemination of information by the committee chair, so what you were talking about is a responsibility. And is that, I'm just looking at one on that, "Communication between committee members." It says, "Is limited to distribution of meeting agendas, scheduling information, documents discussed at meetings." But not, there's not a mention of this But not, there's not a mention of this distribution of information from conversations with the superintendent.
No, but I think maybe that's a separate.
Is it? Because it's also part of what may come through on email, right?
Well, the superintendent is not constrained in what he can communicate with us about.
I use plenty of constraint.
What, hey?
I use plenty of constraint.
I'm sure you are.
But you're saying it's a, it's a committee chair's job to leave a meeting with you potentially and share information back out to the committee.
No, I said that was my experience, so that's what I use. But, you know, I don't, you guys might know of committees where that's, it's done differently. I'll do it any, I would do it any way you wanted to do it. But that, I had just gone on what I thought. And I don't even know if it's always the case that it's the chair that disseminates committee information. Again, I'm just going on, you know, my limited experience with it. So have you know committees where that's not the case and it works better?
No, I think, I mean, I think there's a difference between, there's, there's levels of information, levels of importance of a topic. Something really bad happens in the district, I, I do think the school committee's expectation is that we would hear from you about that. Routine matters, I think it's, it makes complete sense for you to focus your, on the school committee chair. And the school committee chair can triage that and decide, is this something I need to share with the rest of the committee? So.
I think that's kind of worked itself through.
Yeah. Okay, all right. One question I, so are we, I, I think there's some, electronic communications with, in relation to committees, operating committees, I feel, is not represented here, but tell me if I'm missing it. Because that, those are the exceptions and the scenarios we've talked most about here.
Probably not in there because you don't typically have a lot of subcommittees. It doesn't seem.
But if you have one, then they may need the authority to go ahead and deal with some things.
I almost wonder if we should do that on, on a one-off basis. Because I'm thinking about, you know, policy subcommittee. I don't really think we should be talking about policy without that being through the chairperson and as the whole school committee. So that, as an example. Or if there's a subcommittee focused on the equity. You know, I'm not sure in that scenario that.
Maybe unless it's a policy that's already in the books as opposed to one we're working on. So if somebody knew you were on a policy subcommittee, they may make an assumption that you, you dealt with policy issues for the committee. So not ones that are being worked on, that hadn't been voted on. And I don't know that that's the truth, but on something that's already in the books, you say, okay, well, I have a question about this policy. And instead of calling us, may call, something like that. I could see that happening.
Yeah, I could see that happening. Right. Or, again, you know, if you just keep going back to the social media kind of context where somebody raises something and if somebody, if there's somebody on a committee is actively working on that, is it okay for them to respond? And, you know, or, or we put in some, in someplace that the school committee can give the, a subcommittee the authority to respond to, via email or social media, to issues within their domain? Because it feels like those are the places where they are probably gonna be best situated to respond.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of another example where I made the decision not to respond, but it was a long string of emails about attendance policies at the high school and the fact that people were being called in to have meetings because they had taken kids out for a week's vacation outside of the vacation cycle. And the premise of this string of messages was they're targeting specific families and, you know, they're not doing it to everyone. And, and I'm reading it thinking, well, I got called in, you know? And part of me wanted to respond and say, they're not targeting people. Here's, you know, I'm one of them to, here's why, here's what the rationale is behind that. But I chose not to do that. And that's another example where on social, no action sometimes is worse than some kind of messaging that apart from saying, oh, you really should talk to Diane about this. It's.
Do you think it would have been better if you responded?
Well, I think it, again, sometimes those kind of posts, I mean, it might have been better or worse. My daughter would have been mortified. It might have changed the trajectory a little bit. Like, there was a whole narrative going on there that they're unfairly targeting certain families. And the reality is that was not what was happening. And so that message might have said that, but I don't know. Would it have made a difference in the long run? I don't know. And, and I wouldn't have been responding as a school committee member either. So really, that really wasn't a school committee topic. It was more about correcting some misinformation.
Yeah, sure.
But, okay. So, so could we, could we add something like, I'm not sure where or anything, but the school committee, when they form a subcommittee, can give the subcommittee authority to respond to, via email or social media, to issues that, if needed, to issues that are, arise in the subcommittee's domain?
That would certainly have answered the question about the regional committee. I would have addressed that.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
Because I think you're, you're phrasing it in a way that it's not guaranteed that every committee's gonna, subcommittee's gonna have it, but that the school committee can delegate that authority in certain cases.
And in a policy subcommittee, probably not that big a deal, but in that committee, it would have been.
That would have been a big, yeah.
To be able to say, okay, we can respond.
So let's see, where would this go? Does it need its own little subhead for subcommittees or?
The only other place I would think you could maybe sneak it in is in part, on page two, part one. You could make that forward, the electronic communication to the committee chairperson, the subcommittee chairperson or superintendent of school as appropriate.
I'm thinking you want to.
And if you want to separate, I'm just saying if you wanted to throw it in to one part.
No, I think it belongs in that section somewhere under two. But I feel like it's an explicit statement that says.
So A is committee members from the public. B is electronic communications sent to, including all committee members. So it seems like it needs, and C is something else. So I wonder if we could make C this and change C to D.
Yeah. And how are you wording it again?
Something like upon formation of a school committee subcommittee, the school committee can delegate authority to the committee chair to respond via email and social media to issues, to respond via email and social media if needed to issues that arise in the subcommittee's domain. Something about with attention or copy to the committee, the school committee chair, so they know what's going on, I think.
What if it's something like the school committee will delegate authority for response?
Yep, that's to a subcommittee, yeah, that's fine. Are you getting this, Kristy? I'm trying. Okay, I know, it's hard without texts in front of you.
So upon formation of a school committee subcommittee, the school committee may delegate authority for response to email.
And social media.
And social media. What about phone calls?
Yeah, I suppose. But this is, this is, oh, this is a lot of electronic, got it. To issues that arise in the subcommittee's domain.
Four issues. That's a good clarification too, because it doesn't just give them carte blanche.
No. It's, it's that piece, and this ties in my thinking back up to, to A1, when it says, forward to the committee chair or superintendent of schools. Why is it or? Why wouldn't you want that to be and?
I mean, if you're trying to keep everybody in the loop. But there may be issues that are solely within Jeff's purview that are not necessarily school committee. So you're, you're alerting him to that communication.
Okay, let's, can we put and/or so that people realize that, you know, you're not just necessarily choosing one. You may want, it may be relevant for the other person just to be informed. And so that's sort of, and so to go back to the one we were just crafting, I think the committee chair and/or the superintendent of schools should be kept informed of exchanges, communication exchanges or something like that.
Yep. Well, although D makes it clear that they all have to go to Kristy.
Yeah, but that may not, that may or may not get to the committee chair or Jeff directly.
Right, the purpose of giving it to Kristy isn't so that she disseminates. It's for the keeping of the record, not the, I would read it that way.
So upon formation of a school committee subcommittee, the school committee may delegate to the subcommittee chair authority for response to email and social media for issues that arise in the subcommittee's domain.
Yep.
Kind of long, but.
And then I have, at the end of that, I have the subcommittee's domain via email and social media. Or is that earlier?
I had, I just said for response to email and social media. For issues that arise in the subcommittee's domain. And then we want to add the, the super and the school comm chair shall be informed or?
Yeah, kept informed of information, or exchanges, communication, email, I mean, electronic, I don't know what, exchanges. Sound okay?
Yep. Want me to read it back?
Yeah.
Just make sure we got it, okay. Upon formation of a school committee subcommittee, the school committee, do you want to say school committee chair or just school committee?
School committee should give.
The school committee, the school committee may delegate authority to the subcommittee chair to respond to email and social media for issues that arise in the subcommittee's domain. Superintendent and school committee chair shall be kept informed of electronic exchanges.
Maybe should be kept informed regarding these communications.
Yeah, that's nice.
Okay.
I have one question for you folks.
Did you also get this and/or on one?
I got that on the, yeah, yes.
Do you feel that the start of the third paragraph of the whole thing, any of that? So do you need to?
Paragraph.
No individual committee member is a spokesperson for the committee.
Because you're not gonna have had the meeting, you're not gonna have discussed it in a posted meeting, you're not gonna have.
Yeah, we probably need to somehow reference, you know, except for item, except as.
Noted below.
Is noted in 2C.
Word, or. Well, two.
Right, want to be 2C?
It could be, it could be part of 2A. Well, yeah, you're not really, and the, the chairperson. So that, if you're saying except for 2C, then you're saying the chairperson can never respond. Or you as an individual can never respond.
As a spokesperson for the committee? Is that what you're saying?
Right, but wouldn't, again, I'm just trying to go back, sorry, again, come back in Laurie's example when all the things were going on with the, the attendance policy. If she had responded, wouldn't it be assumed that she was responding as a, as a school committee member? Not as a parent or as a person who also got called in?
Yeah.
Janet, you didn't catch that part right now.
That's why I had my back to the camera. Who said that? Jeff? My God.
I think that's a really good point, that it is really problematic when school committee people post as individuals and parents because of what you just said. The presumption is you're somehow representing the school committee's view, even though you may not be intending.
I don't think you can separate the two. Because you have information that they don't have. So there's just an assumption that if you're, if you're saying something, you're saying it from a different perspective than if a school committee.
And again, I think you folks are responsible and I think in general, the rogue committee member is the exception, not the rule. At least it has been. Are you ever gonna be able to rein in the rogue president just because it's a policy?
Because there's, that's a good point. You really need to address that differently.
Right. So I guess what I'm saying is.
Yes, that's why they're rogue.
Yeah, right, well, that's why somebody, that's why somebody. But I guess I'm just raising that is, do you need to reward that if you're really, because you are gonna respond. So maybe it is, well, except for C or except for.
Yeah, except as noted in 2C. Because that would be the only circumstance when that would be okay, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
You got that?
Yep.
All right. The, there are, this, this kind of policy, and I don't know if there are others specifically, are so about the school committee that I wondered, are there other policies that are about the school committee like this? And should they be pulled for like annual review by the school committee?
Well, they're almost all, you know, they're almost all referred to, every policy in there, the MASC policies, I mean, that's.
Well, they, I mean, they're policies upheld by the school committee, but this is all about the school committee's practice. Yeah. And I don't know if there are other ones that are, that really target school committee practice.
You would have to.
Yeah, just wondering if anything pops up in your thinking.
I think I'll look through the index, see if there's anything that sort of pops up.
Because it feels like this is something that the school committee should review. Because you've got new people coming and going all the time. And you want to make sure that this is operationalized, so.
The other thing that you may want to consider reviewing is the open meeting laws.
Yeah.
I have that in a binder. It just tells you what you can say, where you, what you can't say as a group or a quorum or.
Well, you, I know you go over that.
That you get in the charting course.
Okay.
But you wouldn't get our specific policy around this. So I think at one point Angela and I had talked about some kind of an orientation binder or something.
That'd probably be a good idea.
You could always do that and pull out the ones that are specific to and make that in a binder for, you know? So that, these are the ones directly related to actions that we would take or may, may take.
Yeah.
You know, you can't force someone to read that stuff or buy it, but you can't hold them responsible once you give it to them.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
Yeah. So let's, I mean, I'm happy to table that, but I think the idea of an orientation binder is worth revisiting.
I do too.
That's part into the district.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
I think especially as we're heading into a period where we're gonna have more fluidity in the committee, I think. We're gonna have more new people coming and it's really important to make that transition as smooth as possible. Okay.
I hope I was helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Being here twice.
So I'm mindful of the time to, what were we scheduled to, to 9:30 or to 10:00?
I gotta be here all day, so.
Me too.
You don't, probably.
I don't. I'd like to, if we could do.
We should set time on assignments then.
Yeah, we really should. When you, when you book the meeting, Kristy, what did you allot?
An hour.
Okay. So it's, we're five minutes from an hour. Could we agree to end by quarter of 10:00 today?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm gonna ask you prioritize what.
Do you, so when you do that. Do you, so when you do that, do you want to, do you mean that we just end it at, you know, an hour and a half, and then move the other, the ones we don't finish to the next meeting? Okay, because in that case, I will go through and prioritize and in order.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, well, I did it this time, but I...
Today, though, in the interest of time, I think the easiest ones are the MASC recommended changes ones, because they're very short. It's wording or legislative related.
Right. In my, in my own notes, I said both seem fine to me, so they would be quick for me. Okay. But is that your most important priority? What's your most important priority?
None of those have a high priority, they're all the same to me, they're all just, just simple MASC changes from when I looked at them.
So that's all of the remaining ones?
Yeah.
Well, there's two new policies.
No, the, oh, the meal, the meal policies.
Military children and foster. A and B are brand new policies recommended by MASC. The others are small changes recommended by MASC.
Let's look at the military one, because that, I got a call from a parent on here and in Tahuasville.
Okay. And Karen had asked about B as well. Okay, that's kind of her area.
All right, so we'll do A and B, and if we can get to the other three, just approving the recommended changes, we'll do that. So what do we need to know about the educational opportunities?
I should mark this one.
What was the issue, what are the issues that have come up when people have called you?
Well, they move around a lot, you know, as parents come in and they, they transfer children's records, things like that. The ones I get are always, actually the two I've received are things like that, that transfer records, because they do move so much, credits, you know, how do these credits get counted? Some of these children live on, and they're educated on military bases, in military schools. So it's, the issues I've come across are things like that.
So are they issues in our control?
Um...
Well, there are.
Yeah, I mean, they are, and that, you know, we can make, if, we can make changes in things like credits. They always want to know, so like what is, what is, you know, four and a half credits in this school transfer, and my son or daughter should be a senior, and the way you're looking at that, they're a junior, but they've already, they've been in Germany, you know, they've, you know, they've done all of this work, and...
So is, are credits included in this?
Well, this, this idea, and so here's the other thing, sometimes we don't get records. Sometimes it's difficult to get records from these, the military schools.
But that may, that's not in our control particularly, other than follow through, right?
Right.
But in terms of how we interpret credits that are coming in?
I think the third one on the second page.
Wave prerequisites.
Maintain reevaluation of student to ensure continued enrollment.
It's also saying that you're going to just, you're going to honor placement in all courses from the receiving school, so if they were in honors courses, you're going to place them in honors courses. I think it's saying, give people, give students of military some benefit of the doubt.
Yeah.
And make it easy for them to make these transitions.
Like I said, I got a call here, and I got a call in my formative, it was the same kind of thing. They transition so much that there's always a lot of, you know, stress and strain, and, you know, they don't want school to be another place where there's distress for them, so, and I'm, I'm sure that, you know, if I've already received a couple of calls, I'm sure that that's why this policy is...
There.
Is here, yeah. Yeah, it's just happened more and more, so.
I would be supportive.
I am, too. I think you're, what you just said was the purpose of this policy is nicely stated in the opening here, so I, I think this is good to adopt and we should recommend that.
Just adopt as written.
Yes.
All right, educational opportunities for children in foster care. This is similar in a sense that it's to ensure educational stability of students in foster care.
Was there a reason that, was, do you say Karen was wanting us to discuss this?
Because people personnel services deals with students at foster care, homeless students.
Are there any issues that have come up that we should be aware in relation to this?
The entity right down the street here has a lot of...
Oh, the UINC, oh, no, Bridge Program?
Yeah, well, what happens is...
It's closed now. I think it's still UINC.
I think it's still UINC. But we have had these issues with them making just unilateral decisions about where kids get placed, and so, and we've had a couple of issues where a student goes, gets placed back, comes to, is there, goes to our schools, gets placed in Worcester. But now the, DCF now says, okay, well, they're still going to the Berlin-Boylston schools. Just make a decision, a unilateral, and sometimes we, Karen deals with this all the time. So we've had actually a lot of that, because we're responsible for the transportation.
For state residents.
Yeah, so that becomes the fight that, you know, you know.
Well, and it says in this policy, decisions about whether a student in foster care should continue to attend the school of origin should be made collaboratively by DCF, the student, the student's family, the school, and the district of origin.
That doesn't happen all the time.
Well, this is written in our policy, then, if we adopt this.
DCF is really awful. They're just...
Well, and they're, I'm sure, understaffed and overworked and...
Right, but they've had a lot of, they've had a huge deal with staff. Because of debt, the system.
Hello.
My sprinkled...
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a beautiful jacket.
Thank you.
So Lent, Cola.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know if anybody's observed it, however.
You're a little left out, are you?
We didn't comment on his fashion choices, that was rather sexist.
Maybe there's a policy in this, we looked at.
Okay, so we were looking at the recommended educational opportunities for children in foster care policy from MASC, and we know that you, this is your domain, and whether there are things that we should be aware of as we look at this, or issues that come up that we want to make sure this is...
You haven't seen it in a while.
Thank you.
Yeah. I apologize.
I was talking to them about the, the organization down the street here, we've had some issues with them making unilateral decisions about placement and transportation, and I don't know if that's something you want to...
Should I explain?
Yeah.
So, the, we've had a great working relationship with that program down the street. We worked it out years ago, not we, but the, the town worked it out. So when a student comes in, they take care of transportation. Any other district, the transportation is taken care of by the school, but that was an agreement by the town. And so we've had a great working relationship with them. The law changed in June, I believe, and basically when students come to that program, they have, they try to send them back to their district of origin. If for some reason they decide that district of origin is not safe or something, which a lot of them come from Worcester, and a lot of times they want to make that decision, then they will enroll them in Tohonto. That's, we have some input on that, but that's DCF's decision, not our decision. So we can't say no. They come if DCF decides that they're coming.
Where do they get the understanding that it's their decision? I mean, this is...
That's the new regulation.
That's the regulation.
That is the regulation.
Because that's not what it says in our, in this proposed policy.
They make the best interest determination.
Probably that's why this policy is here.
Well, but the policy doesn't do any good.
So let me see what you're referring to.
It's not a state regulation.
So, yeah.
Yes, it should be made collaboratively. I'm sure at the last entrance, last sentence somewhere. However, if there is a disagreement, DCF will finalize the best interest determination. And that's really what it means.
That's what Jerry brought you, huh?
So when they come in...
It's not really collaborative.
We, yeah. We sometimes, if we push hard enough, we'd have some input, but DCF has the final say on that. The concern is, and I've written to the state about this, and that's why Jeff, that's what he's referring to. What happens is we have a lot of kids from Worcester who are, they're feeling they're unsafe in Worcester. They come here, they want to enroll in Tohonto. In the past, we're happy to provide services, we're happy to support those kiddos, but once they're enrolled in Tohonto, we'll know for life. We have to then transport them, we become school of origin. So some of these children, it's a temporary placement, some of these children have gone to foster homes in Worcester, and now we are required to transport them from Worcester back to Tohonto. So that is brand new this year, and we got hit a little bit hard on that. So I've been doing a lot of talking with the state about this, and how unfair it is, and I've said to them upfront, I now have to fight you on having the kids come to Tohonto, where we've always been open to trying to support them any way we can, but our fight has to be they can't come in the door because that's when we get hit. We had about $160,000 in unexpected costs.
It's a budget issue.
Transportation.
Transportation and a bunch of pieces with DCF, but yeah, that's a big part of it.
And it is, it's a budget issue, and we don't, you know, we don't, we don't want to, I mean, we don't want to turn kids away who are in a safe environment or something like that. But at the same time, we're responsible for the students in Berlin-Boylston, $160,000. That's basically what we just cut out of a budget in Berlin.
Yeah, it's a lot.
That's a lot.
It is a lot.
And it's a lot when you say, well, it's really just transportation to get them here. And that's a, that's a big hit for us to, and you're right, because at the end of the day, and Karen has been, and Karen and I have talked, have talked about this, she's been in touch with the state, and you know, there's, there's no real law about it, but it's like a regulation. At the end of the day, you say what you want, and then DCF just makes the decision, and then it's, and it's right there. So there's not, there's nearly not equity in it. This is, and it's also this assumption that the, that we don't know, we don't know, or we won't do what's best for, for a child, when, when that's not true.
Right.
Not true at all. But we do prioritize, you know, we're Berlin-Boylston Regional School District, and that's, that's how we prioritize it. I mean, that's what people in this town pay for.
So this is, it makes the whole process of citing programs really problematic, too, because it would make a community very reluctant to have a program like this in their community. You could see scenarios where this becomes a deliberate action, too. You know, a student may, it may be very clear that a student isn't going to remain in the district, but now they're going to have the opportunity, should they move back to Worcester to have free transportation to the district, and...
And honestly, I think that's what happens with us most of the time. We get a lot of students from the Worcester area because they try and place kids as close to their hometown as possible, and most of the time they try and go back to Worcester.
Now, here's the other thing on this policy. This is, this becomes your policy when you, after you adopt it. I don't think that this DCF, this, they will have final, DCF will finalize the best interest determination. I don't think that ought to be in there. I really don't. I think it should be.
You're staying regulated.
So you said that when you, when you called them, I saw the email change, where there wasn't a final determination that they were going to, the DCF was going to, the DCF was going to be the final determinant, that it was a collaborative process. I know the state danced around.
It's collaborative until you can't decide, is basically what it is. We're going to all talk about it, and then if we can't decide, DCF makes that decision. That's, that's how this reads, and that's how the law reads.
So one, one of my questions is a scenario that a student is in the program here in Boylston, maybe they're from Worcester, and the decision is they're going to go to Tohonto, so now Tohonto owns them, this district owns them. Maybe they are discharged from the program, they're living in a foster family, with a foster family in Worcester, but they want to go to Shrewsbury, or they want to go to Assabah. We're now responsible for the transportation of that student from Worcester to Assabah.
With the district of origin.
With the district of origin, wherever they go to school, we're responsible. It's a real quirk in the law.
So this, this sounds like not an issue that we can deal with in our policy.
Well, my guess is that's why this is a pause. I'm sure we're not the only ones who, and I'm sure we're not the only school districts who said this, who will try to fight this and have got this going around by the state.
I don't think this changes anything in the regulations. I think this is really just restating because of the new regulations. It's not helping us any, I guess, is what I'm saying.
And the issue that you're raising is really an issue with the state, and not with anything that we can, I mean, the intent of this is, again, to facilitate opportunities for that child, those children, the students.
But what are our choices as far as the policy? Obviously, we have to follow state regulation, but if we, that doesn't mean we have to adopt this policy.
I, I think we should send this to Russ for a review.
Okay.
I really don't.
You don't think he, anyone, I mean, MASC has refuted, what are we asking Russ to look for?
To, to, to see if there's any, do we have to, do we have to adopt as written? I know there's a state regulation, I get that, right? So I understand that the state regulation was not enmeshed general law, I mean, still you have to follow it. But is there anything here that's, anything in the law that, that gives us any kind of leeway with this? And I'm not trying to keep kids out of the district, I'm certainly not doing that, but to say it's, it's a collaborative process, but in the end, like, okay, we're going to talk about, but I'm going to make the decision, well, we might as well not even talk about it, I might as well just make the decision, because they end up doing what they want.
I think your irritation is with the law, which I agree with.
Yeah.
It is what it is. And I wonder if we should just say as per the law, instead of delineating in case that changes.
Right, right.
My hope is it'll change.
Yes, right. That, that makes some sense to me, Karen.
Not that you shouldn't, if you feel more comfortable, run it by Russ and see if there's, he may know something that we can do about this.
Well, that's what I'm saying, maybe there's something in the law that's, that's, you know, gives us a little more say in this whole process, not asking to, to, you know, be the king, but you know, maybe there's, you know, maybe there's something a little more equitable than what this states for this district. It basically says that the district, that the towns really don't have a say. If you have a DCF facility, if you've let one in your town, then now you should plan on, you know, some unexpected budget increases.
So Karen, go through, what's the most common scenario that you've seen?
So we had several children come in September, which is when this first went into law, who came from Worcester in bad situations in Worcester. They said it was in their best interest to come here. Worcester has to be part of that as their district, Worcester's not going to argue with them. At that point, we didn't realize we were going to be on the hook, quite honestly, for the transportation, once they came back, because it was brand new. And so we've always welcomed those students as they've come in, so that they could be as stable as possible. We welcome them into the school. They did very well in Tohonto, it's a very different setting, and a lot of these kids do very well in Tohonto, and we're happy to see them get stabilized, and then they usually go back. But this time, when it was time to go back, we realized that we were on the hook for this. To us, the, the town of origin was still Worcester, but we were not. And we did at that time talk about it with Russ, and there wasn't an awful lot of discussion. You know, we talked about this being an unfunded mandate, and he had advised Bob to talk with somebody about that piece, but it didn't sound like there was an awful lot we can do, but maybe we can have a better conversation with him.
Well, there might not be, I mean, I just...
So I still, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still not totally clear following you. So they entered Tohonto, and then they went back to Worcester schools, is that what you're saying?
Oh, I'm sorry. Then they be, then they got placed, this is a short-term usually facility, and then they got placed in a foster home or a group home in Worcester.
Okay.
And then that's... And then that's when we became on the hook. Up until then, the transportation cost us nothing to go to Tohoto, they were on the regular Tohoto bus.
Right.
There was no issue.
Who paid for it then?
So they get enrolled in Tohoto.
And they stayed in Tohoto.
Yeah.
While they were living here.
So they're in DCF a short-term facility.
They're on the regular bus, there's a bus stop right there, and they can get right on and go to Tohoto.
And we're responsible.
So there's no extra cost.
They're placed in Worcester now, in the foster care, but we're still the district of origin, so instead of going to the Worcester schools, they come back to the Tohoto schools, which they were enrolled in when they were in the DCF.
Right.
Only this town are responsible for transportation. They're on a, they're on a route right now, because they're right up here.
Understood.
So now they go down the street, and we gotta send a bus down there to get them.
Okay, understood. I was trying to understand if it, if it was the opposite, that they enrolled in Tohoto, but then decided they wanted to go to Worcester, and we were transporting kids to Worcester.
No.
But it's really the, which would be an odd occurrence, I guess.
And I don't know if anything, I don't know if there's anything in the regulation or the law, or the, you know, I know it references the, the E S C fostering connections to success and increasing adoptions after 2008.
What, what happens in our conversations with U Inc. about this? What's U Inc.'s position, just out of curiosity?
They really haven't had a position. We've had conversations with them about when students are placed there, and they're very good about working with us on the transportation about that. Once they leave U Inc., and they go to a foster home in Worcester, it's no longer their issue. And so they, they have very little to do with it, it's really more DCF that we talk to. So for instance, some students just came from Boston, in our place down there, and so we fought them and said, nope, they need, Boston needs to provide for them, they can't come here. And I don't like doing that, because, you know, I don't like these kids to, you know, not be able to go to Tohoto as they come here, and be bused somewhere back, but we've had to fight that fight, because it's just gonna be.
Otherwise, you're gonna be transporting from Boston.
That's right, we're gonna get slammed.
Yeah.
Wow, and have you been successful?
Yeah, so far.
So this language is, about transportation is from the regulation, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't, I don't think it would hurt to have.
The concern Jeff and I have, and we've talked to the state, we've tried to, you know, so, any other ideas of where we can go to fight the fight?
When you become the, the, the easy place to go because you don't fight it, then you become the easy place to go.
Right, right.
And it happens all the time.
We don't wanna do that.
And I'm not, again, I don't wanna deny any student an education, I really don't, it's not what this is about.
Right.
But, you know, we don't have a big budget, we really don't for these towns. We don't have a lot of students, so 10 students, 15 students, plus the transportation cost. Like I said, we just cut that out of an entire town budget, never mind transporting a couple of students.
Right.
So this, like, you know, there's some big districts, they absorb this stuff pretty easily. That's not the case with us. We, we gotta watch every dollar that comes into the district for this stuff.
So, I don't have a problem asking Russ to take a look at this, if you feel like you might get something useful back. If you think that he's really just gonna reiterate the law and say, because this is a restatement of the law, basically. So if you think he's, doesn't see any kind of little corners in there, in that law, in the language of the law, then I think we probably need to adopt this and continue to hammer back to the state about this not working right.
Well, my guess is because this is written exactly like what we experienced, I'm sure districts have been fighting it, and the M A S C said, no, no, this is just the way it is.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean we have to adopt a policy that says all of this. We could just adopt a policy that says we agree to follow state law.
Yeah.
And hope that it changes.
It's, adopting a policy that is really difficult for us to live with is.
Well, it doesn't give, it doesn't give us, when every single paragraph ends with DCF will make the final decision.
Right.
Then as soon as we have an issue like that, DCF will come and say, well, here's your policy.
Yeah.
I mean, then there's no fight, and there's no, there's no collaboration at all, not even a fight, there's no collaboration. We just own it.
They do say the district can seek review of DCF's decision by utilizing a foster care selection dispute resolution process.
Yeah, and that's a student by student, and this is a bigger issue than a student by student kind of dispute.
I don't, I don't think it would hurt to have them just take a look at it. It's up to you, but.
So are you also then advocating that we create something very minimal that is, doesn't give DCF any kind of language to use against us?
I, I, that would be my recommendation, yeah. I mean, we can't violate the law, but I mean, I think that we should, if we could take this thing and have.
In the meantime, I think you're doing the right thing to.
So, next steps as this goes to Russ, you, you'll take it to Russ?
Yeah.
You'll send it, you'll tell him what your concerns are, and then, then we need potentially some redraft of this into some bare bones.
Yeah, and I'll ask him if we can, we can just have something that just says, you know, the Berlin-Bowilston Regional School District advised by all federal estate laws, something like that.
And then, and some rationale at the front, that it restates our commitment to ensuring stability for students, et cetera.
Sure.
Yeah, okay, that would be good. So you'll bring this back to us?
Yes.
All right.
I need to go, so can we?
Carry the rest of this forward?
Yeah, if you wanna, can you do that?
Do it for the next meeting?
No. Well, either carry it forward, or do you wanna finish, or?
No, no, we, we send it in now, but we should send another meeting date. Also, I don't know that we all have time for this next, but I had it in my notes, other policies, next policies to review. We're taking out the R policies, or we're talking about that. What about the exhibit documents?
Those, those should probably be taken out, too.
So we should review those, pull those, and decide whether those are ready to go as well. And then I wondered, as I've seen a lot about this in the news, and I don't know if you had discussion about this before, earlier in this subcommittee, I'm wondering about the status of vaping in this, in our schools, and whether our policy is appropriate.
I believe it's under the tobacco policy.
Yeah, I just, I just saw something on it.
But I think it's, I think it's mentioned in there.
And, and, you know, I'm wondering if there are issues cropping up around this?
Yes.
And whether we should be looking at that policy, just to make sure we've got it in.
We, we probably should, I just got a lot of Representative Tran, who addressed to the Berlin-Bowilston Public Schools, but it was a, sort of a form letter saying that he had recently met with students who had said that the vaping is going on, and nothing's being done about it.
Yeah.
So I forwarded it to the schools, but it's probably something we should look at, there's stuff, there's things in the policies about that, but maybe something strict about the actual enforcement.
The challenge is you can't smell it.
Yeah.
Right, right, and I've been kinda wondering what the experiences are that might inform our thinking about this.
Well, they, they do have some new detectors.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to get into it right now, but whether we should put it on the agenda.
Yeah, we should probably take a look at it.
Diane has been doing some communication with parents, too, sending things home that are really helpful, educational things, because parents, to some extent, this is new for a lot of parents, too.
I guess I'd be interested in having feedback from middle high school levels in particular, about whether the policy as written covers the issues that they are seeing, and whether we need, you know, there are issues that are coming up that we should be thinking about in a policy review.
We could send the policies to Sally and Diane, just to review and see if there's anything, but it's really, it's huge round, and the stuff that I've been able to do. I was talking to one assistant principal, Tommy, and the class, they, I don't think I'm, I think I'm gonna tell you this, the kid was, had the end of, had a hoodie on, he had the end, the plastic end, you know, the string in his mouth, like they chew on it.
And he was vaping.
He wore a sweatshirt, and it had, you could vape through that thing.
That's pretty cool.
And a, and a place that, and someplace in, some kinda, pretty ingenious, you know, you know, my back on a carousel, I've really missed a boat here, I think, that actually kinda would take the, you know, whatever was expelled and, and dissolve it.
Wow, wow, that's so smart. Like, why can't they put that to good use, you know?
Right.
There's some good thinking there, it's just, can we just put it in the right place? I don't know. All right, so what are we looking at?
Next meeting.
So, excuse us. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, for coming over. So we're looking at May, or I assume, or April? When's the next meeting?
Is.
I think May would be the.
Yeah, we have vacation in then, it's last week of April, so. Right, so the next meeting is May 21st?
That's the same day as the school, school committee?
That's what she's saying.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, no, that's the next school committee, yeah.
She was looking for that, to say. Okay, well, we should do it the week before, if possible.
What about the week of May 6th?
Nope.
I'd have a lot of difficulty.
Okay.
Are you available? No, I'm, I've got more flexibility, so pick out what looks like it's doable, give us enough time before the next meeting to get any kind of policies ready, you guys.
Wednesday, the 15th of May, does that work?
Uh, I may be out of state.
For how many days?
15th to 17th.
Okay, so.
Oh, 15th to, 14th to 16th.
All right. And I can't do Monday, so let's go ahead and back up to the previous week and look at. Wednesday, May 8th?
Good.
Wednesday, May 8th, is that good for you?
I don't know.
It's good for you. I have an appointment, but you guys are welcome to.
What, you're not, you're not?
I have an appointment at 8:00.
We can maybe have it later, will you be around after?
Yep, absolutely.
Or, I don't know, you have to put it in the front of your day, Lori?
I could do it at 9:00.
Would that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we just restrict it to an hour, though? Is that?
Well, file them in.
Okay. It's just kind of in the middle of my workday there, so. All right, so 9 o'clock on Wednesday, May 8th? And 9 to 10.
All right.